Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of Peter Township Council order for Monday, January 27, 2025. Mr. Lauer, please call the roll.
I've not heard from Ms. Shannafeld. Dr. Prostka?
Here.
Mr. O'Curry?
I'm here.
Mr. Steigl?
Here.
Mr. Cozer?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
I have not heard from Mr. Ruff.
Okay, please, everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to introduce you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on this evening's agenda are actually two special reports, both of which are dealing with the police department. So we got the chief come up and I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, sir. So we're going to do a ceremony for swearing in two officers in, and we're going to present letters of commendation to six officers for two separate incidents. So first off, I'd like to thank Peter Township Council and Mr. Lauer for giving us the time and opportunity to conduct this. I'd also like to thank Magistero District Judge Melligrain for dating the time to administer our office of office. We have two officers who will be sworn in, and before we begin, I'd like to thank members of the Peter Township Police Department, as well now, I'm sure they're here. A lot of these guys are here on their own time tonight. I'd like to thank them for their hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm. As I've said before, I think this department is one of the best departments in western Pennsylvania, and I stand behind that, and these guys are exactly the reason for that. So the officers we are swearing in tonight both come to us from the city of Pittsburgh. They have unique experiences and bring with them an attitude, a great attitude, and willingness to do whatever is necessary to help the community. Chuck, Charles Allard, Frank Welling, you guys come on up? You guys standing right here? All right, Charles Allard, Chuck, currently resides with his wife Jessica in San Anthony in South Park. He began his career in law enforcement with Pittsburgh Police Department in 2019. Officer Allard left the city of Pittsburgh Police in October 2024 after six years of service, and he started his career with Peter's Township on October 27. He's an excellent officer. He brings experience from his previous employment with the Department of Energy. He's currently assigned to our intermediate unit as a school resource officer. I can't tell you how wonderful it is to have him there as our resource officer in the IU. His attitude is fantastic. Some of the things he's already done over there in just a short time since January have been just amazing. We're lucky to have him, so is the IU, and we look forward to him having a long career with Peter's Township. Officer Frank Welling currently resides with his wife Mandy in Beltwood Park. He's a father of four children. He began his career in law enforcement in 1999, working for Verona, East McKeese Ford Stow Rock School District in Trafford Borough. He then joined Pittsburgh Police Department in 2005 when he achieved the rank of sergeant. Officer Welling retired from the city of Pittsburgh in January 25 after 20 years of service, and he started his career with us immediately thereafter on January 5. Officer Welling is an excellent officer, comes to us with a wealth of experience, having spent a lot of his career at the Pittsburgh Police Department academy. He has numerous training certifications that we're going to take full advantage of over the next few years. He's a great attitude, and his interactions with the public are always positive. We're also very lucky to have him. Judge, if you'd like to introduce the oath of office to him?
Repeat after me. I say your name.
I'm Charles Allard.
I'm Franklin.
You solemnly swear and affirm?
You solemnly swear and affirm?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this common law?
And the Constitution of this common law.
And that I will discharge the duties?
And I will discharge the duties?
Of my office with fidelity?
Of my office with fidelity?
I will bear true faith?
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
To the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Its citizens?
Its citizens.
And their elected representatives?
And their elected representatives.
I will perform all my duties?
I will perform all my duties.
As an officer honestly?
As an officer honestly.
Faithfully?
Faithfully.
In accordance with the law?
In accordance with the law.
And I will obey the orders of my superior officers?
And I will obey the orders of my superior officers.
And conduct myself at all times?
And conduct myself at all times.
In accordance with the regulations?
In accordance with the regulations.
Set forth by the Peter Township Chief of Police?
Set forth by the Peter Township Chief of Police.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you flick a picture of you guys?
Absolutely. I was going to do one at the end with everybody, including the judge, so.
Would you mind if we just grab?
Yep.
I'm asking you to stand outside of the lane.
All right, our second item of business is the presentation of letters of commendation for two separate incidents. The first letter of commendation is for Detectives Evan Caruso and Edward Walker. I'll read what each letter says and then present it to each of them. All these letters have been signed by Mr. Steigl. Detective Caruso and Detective Walker, on October 24, 2021, Peter Township Police Department became aware of a sexual assault involving a kindergarten-age child. The teenage actor, who is the victim's half-sibling, was arrested. During this investigation, it was learned that the teenage actor had also been victimized by online sexual predators. These predators persuaded the teenager into performing acts on the sibling and making recordings, subsequently sending these recordings over the internet. The investigation lasted approximately one year, and during that time, the Peter Township Police conducted 10 electronic device downloads utilizing Cellrite and Graykey. That's the system that we use to download cellphones and all those things. It's a wonderful system, and Detective Caruso was amazing with it. They interviewed nine individuals, issued three subpoenas and search warrants, including a search warrant executed in Minnetonka, North Dakota, and made four arrests. The teenage actor was sentenced to 18 months of confinement in a juvenile facility. One actor residing in Florida was sentenced to 40 years in prison. Second actor from California is pending sentence, and the third actor from North Dakota was sentenced to 50 years in prison. On January 25, 2024, these detectives became aware of another child exploitation case involving the same teenage victim. The child exploitation involved actors talking to the victim and sending photographs to them over the internet. Over the course of this currently ongoing investigation, Peter Township downloaded two electronic devices, again using Cellrite and Graykey, and executed 17 search warrants. As a result, four arrests have been made and are pending in court. It was discovered that the first individual arrested is a charter bus driver in Greenville, Pennsylvania. Second defendant is a rod operator at Cedar Point amusement park in Ohio, and the third defendant is currently a suspended middle school teacher from Arrowhead, California. The fourth defendant resides in Florida and has yet to be taken into custody with an active arrest warrant. Homeland Security Investigations, Pittsburgh assisted with these investigations. The investigative skill, good judgment, and sound police work displayed by the criminal investigative unit allowed numerous criminals to be taken into custody. There's no telling how many victims there would have been had this unit not been involved. As a result of their efforts, not only were criminals removed from the streets, but the image of the Peter Township Police Department was enhanced. Your efforts are worthy of recognition, and this letter of commendation shall serve as a formal acknowledgement and a written record of a job well done. Gentlemen, if you guys could come up? Congratulations. Thank you very much. All right. So our second letter, our second incident involves six officers, Detectives Caruso and Walker again, Sergeant Oros, who can't be with us tonight, Sergeant Scott, Officers King and Officer Weaver. In May 2024, an elderly male became the victim of an online scam. His computer was locked, and he received a message to contact Microsoft to resolve it. The victim contacted the phone number provided and spoke to an unknown individual. This individual instructed the victim to remove money from his bank account and have it transferred. The victim removed $10,000 from his bank account and then provided that money to a courier for safekeeping. Two days later, the same scenario played out, this time with a $14,700 withdrawal. The money was also provided to the courier. A third attempt two days later was made to obtain money from the victim, and he removed $14,000 in cash from his bank. Prior to the courier appearing at his residence, the victim contacted his daughter, who immediately determined her father was being scammed, and brought him to the Peter Township Police Department and reported the incident to Detective Walker. The following day, a money pickup was initiated by the suspect. Detective Walker planned an operation to take the courier into custody. Envelopes were prepared with monetary amounts and bill-sized paper inside. Officer Trevor King surreptitiously entered the residence, and Detective Evan Caruso, Officer John Weaver, Sergeant Gary Oros, and Sergeant Spencer Scott conducted surveillance. A suspect arrived and was met at the door by the victim, who gave the suspect the envelopes. Officer King then appeared and immediately arrested the suspect, later identified as Naresh Garapati. The victim identified Garapati as the actor who had previously been at his residence to obtain money. He was searched and taken to the Peter Township Police Department. His vehicle was terminated station, and the search warrant for the vehicle was completed by Sergeant Scott. The searches of his person and vehicle provided evidence of a large-scale fraud operation, with evidence that Garapati had conducted this type of scam all over the United States, including Alaska and Arkansas. Charges were filed against Officer King against Garapati. He was arraigned before Magistero District Justice Melligrain and lodged in the Washington County Jail. Detective Caruso applied for a search warrant for several cellular phones obtained from Garapati, and the analysis and extraction of the data from the phones confirmed that this was a nationwide fraud operation. The data from this extraction was turned over to federal law enforcement for further investigation outside of Peter Township jurisdiction, and those investigations are ongoing. The North Fayette Township Police Department also filed charges against Garapati for similar force of conduct. Garapati was eventually granted bail in this case, with the condition of his bail require him to make restitution to the victim. This was completed, and the victim from Peter Township received all of his money back. He's currently awaiting sentence. As a result of these gentlemen's efforts, not only was the criminal stop with the image of the Peter Township Police Department enhanced, your efforts are worthy of recognition, and a letter of commendation shall serve as a formal acknowledgement and a written record of a job well done. Gentlemen, if you could come up? I'll have them in a good order, so. Gentlemen, congratulations. Judge, if you could come up and sit. Chuck, Frank, do you guys come up too? Well, you know what, let's just do one with this, and then we'll get to the other one with you guys.
Cal, you want to move them over?
Yeah, we gotta.
Come over here. Let the judge stand in the middle. Chuck and Frank, come up. Real quick, we want to get one with everybody.
Feel like I'm back at school.
Free, set, freeze. One, two, three. Who did it? The thing.
Thanks, guys, for all your hard work.
I really appreciate you allowing us to do this.
Move on approval for minutes.
Second.
Motion to second approval minutes from January 6, 2025, meeting. Those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Steigl, I just want to take note that Ms. Shannafeld's here.
Oh, right. Next, we'll move into audience comments. This is an opportunity for a member of the audience to speak for up to five minutes on an unenjed audio. Mr. Donan?
Bob Donan, 107 South.
These are about the same?
No, they're different.
Different numbers? Okay.
Bob Donan, 107 South U Court, McMurray. In your docket tonight, under correspondence between page 205 and 253, you'll find an Act 14 notice for nine wells that EQT is drilling on the Mingo well pad, which is down Route 88 toward the river. So in the process of looking at their permitting, I noticed, these are the well horizontals. You know, most, these wells are usually about a mile and a quarter deep, and now they're going out like three miles. So this would be 3H, that's 5H, 7H, 8H, and the bottom hole. So that's where the well ends. So I mapped the GPS on Google Earth, and you can see that one abandoned well right there is one of those documents. Those documents, that inspection was just done maybe like two weeks ago. So the danger is, they're going to be drilling these in May. Could you bring up the other picture there, Mr. Lauer?
Sure.
Thank you. And here's the other well, the Hannah and Catherine. And it's between 1H and 3H. These laterals or horizontals are about 1,000 feet apart. So you can see this one's particularly close to that horizontal. So what happens is when these abandoned wells haven't been plugged, which they're supposed to be before this sort of activity takes place, you have the chance for well communication. So if you Google EQT, New Freedom, Pennsylvania down in Green County, you'll see what can happen when those wells communicate, what it can do to water wells and groundwater. So, by the way, on these Act 14 notices, like in your docket, the cover letter always makes that say it's just like for informational purposes. But in fact, it gives you a chance, and bordering townships, a chance to comment on these permits. It's not just for information only. So I don't know how far along this is. I think the last document from Union Township indicated they'd be drilling these wells beginning May 15. But they're currently drilling the Sera wells on the Sera well pad on El Ramo Road, and that seemed to have proceeded ahead of schedule. So theoretically, if they drill these in May and June, they'd probably be fracking them in summer, June, July, August. So that would be when I would think the greatest risk of something like a frac out is what they call that, when these wells communicate with, you know, they're fracking at like 9,000 PSI. So that's when you have the greatest risk of something happening. Now, I emailed all three email addresses on those DEP individuals in inspections. Never heard anything back. So I don't know where it is. It's kind of in limbo. So that's why I'm here to.
Yes. Yes, sir. It's been seven or eight years since I've worked for a gas company. At that time, they had an area of review regulation in place, which I think was 500 feet, John, you may know this better than I do at this point, 500 feet off the horizontal section, and then I can't remember the depth, because the company would be on the hook for any communication with any wells that were abandoned or in the area. All that information would be submitted with a well permit application. I would say your best bet is to, they probably already have this accounted for, either plug it or they'd have to abandon it. Either the best bet would probably be to abandon it. This may already be in the process right now. We're not giving that information with these Act 14 notices. It's more for land use. But I can, I can almost guarantee that that was addressed in the well permit applications that went into DEP. And I think if you could actually get in touch with somebody, they probably would supply that for you.
Well, I'm going to put it in your laps. It's Peter Township and.
And that's not a problem, Mr. Steigl. We can reach out to DEP and get that information.
Okay, just want to make you aware. Any more questions?
No, but thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience?
So to answer your question, sir, I'm Roddy Wilkinson. If you go back one slide, you'll see that the Eva Two well is about 150 feet from my back door. So this is my house right here, and that's the well. I asked them to plug the well, and I supplied a petition to DEP, and they actually answered back in 9/25 of 2017. Well-plugging notice intent to plug well. Washington Energy then filed an injunction. They wanted to flare the well. They also wanted to do a compressor site on the well. So they blocked the intent to plug, and I've been waiting almost 10 years for them to plug the well. So they're supposed to plug the well. They just have it, and I don't know why. I can't get any answer back.
Yeah, let me delay the whole drilling. Frank, could you sign your name, please?
Sure. Well, state your name and where you live.
Roddy Wilkinson, 250 Churchill Road.
Okay.
I have the 50 acres from my house to the east towards Turkeyfoot. My brother has the 50 acres from my house to the Finleyville Cemetery. And it looks like they're going to be going right into my house. So I get some royalties.
Yeah, there you go. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, seeing nobody else, we'll move into unfinished business, which is nine. So we're moving into new business. So this evening, we do have a consent agenda. If I can find that.
Hang on. I'm going to move that we approve the consent agenda unless somebody wants to pull one off. I move that we approve the resolution on changing authorized signers on bank accounts at Washington Financial, resolution changing authorized signers on bank accounts at CFS Bank, resolution changing authorized signers on bank accounts at Clearview Federal Credit Union, acceptance of the 2024 survey of financial conditions, exoneration of Tracy Aiken and Jordan Tax Service for their obligation to collect 2024 Peter Township property tax, and to approve a special permit for St. Benedict's Church, authorizing trail banners and off-premise temporary signs for the Frisfray, which comport with what they did in the prior years.
Second.
Does anybody want to move anything off that agenda?
I do not.
Okay. I mean, the case, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I carry 6-0. Next will be acceptance of the resignation of Rebecca Kaminsky from the Peter Township Sanitary Authority.
I move that we accept Ms. Kaminsky's resignation and thank her for her service.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0 there. Item C will be appointment of a member of the Peter Township Sanitary Authority Board. I think you guys interviewed last Monday.
Mr. Lewis, Mr. O'Curry, and myself had the opportunity to interview a series of candidates for the sanitary authority and for some other openings on different boards. And again, we were impressed with the quality of the candidates. You know, we never have difficulty finding anybody. The choice isn't, it's not a choice between who will be the, how would I say, the least effective member as opposed to who will be the most effective member. So we're very fortunate in this township to have such a depth of people to choose from when it comes to these boards. So I will make a motion that we appoint Nathan Clayhout to the sanitary authority board.
And that term will be ending on January 3, 2028. I have that wrong. I have second. I'll say.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 6-0. Next item will be acceptance of the resignation of Theodore Cartefellis from the Planning Commission.
I'll move we accept Mr. Cartefellis's resignation from the Planning Commission and thank him for his service.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. Appointment of a member to the Peter Township Planning Commission.
All right, I'll make a motion that we move Rochelle Corbell from alternate A to the position of full member on the Planning Commission. I'll also make a motion that we move John Waldinger from alternate B to alternate A, and I'll make a motion that we appoint Leslie Peters as alternate B to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, motion to second. We can do this all on one chair. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0 there as well. So that takes care of item F as well.
So we're up for G.
G and H are going to be tabled at this time.
It's my request that we table those. Since we published the agenda, let's come to light as some concerns with regard to that position. We want to get this resolved. Do you need a motion? Yes. I'll move that we table G and H, which are resolutions dealing with the employee handbook and police manual policies and procedures.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 6-0. So item Y is going to be an amendment of the Peter Township Police Manual Policies and Procedures dealing with body worn cameras and dissemination of protected information. We make a motion.
I move that we adopt resolution number 01-08-25.
Actually, hang on on that one. What is?
It will be 01-06-25. 01-06-25? Right. I'll move that we do that, amending police manual policies.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you guys want to talk about that at all?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Next will be a resolution, I'm sorry, we just hit that, authorization of the appropriate township officials to enter into a settlement agreement with Lucas and Brittany Cody and Venetia Road LLC.
Is this what we discussed last week?
This is what we have been able to do since the last time we talked about this. We have agreement that we are, the township will not be responsible for enforcing the agreement, particularly as it relates to the sale of the property and not issuing a building permit. The other thing, there was initially, it required council by virtue of this agreement to approve some slight changes in lot lines. That's not appropriate, we thought, for this agreement, but rather that's part of the final plan process. So what this really, at this point, does is provide for this additional screening. It gives the Codies a relief in terms of a house can't be built on there for five years or until they sell their property. So, you know, from that standpoint, we think it's a reasonable settlement to the dispute.
Now, is the, that condition with no house being built on that law, is that going to be on the plan?
There's going to be a note on the plan to put people on notice, but again, it's not us enforcing that note.
Right.
Now, is that landscaping our responsibility to maintain? No, that's going to be on the property, and it'll be the, I think it's actually in the open space, so it'll be the homeowners association. Basically, we're not paying anything or having to do anything.
No, no.
Except for maybe not enforcing something. They're doing this.
All right, I'll make a motion that we authorize the appropriate township officials to enter into a settlement agreement with Lucas and Brittany Cody and Venetia Road LLC.
Second.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here's 6-0. Next item would be renewal of various insurance coverages, including automobile fire liability for 2025. Looks like you guys have three proposals, the lowest being $258,077.
And given the nature of how that structured, it actually broadens our coverage, particularly the area of police liability by having a separate limit. So it's our recommendation that the manager be directed to bind insurance with the three firms that are shown in proposal one.
Make a motion on that?
So moved.
Chuck, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0 there.
I just want to point something out, and I can't remember where I heard this. It has something to do with the insurance coverages. There's some kind of change in the law or something that's going to require us, I think, to have more insurance. There's a change in the, no, the change is in the immunity. There's challenges to the tort immunity. And I don't know where I saw it, but I read it someplace. Do you know what I'm talking about?
I hope it's not on the internet.
No, no, no. This was, they want to, there's a challenge to both the Commonwealth agencies and the municipal immunity. And I got the impression from reading the article that, or maybe it's something pending in the legislature, but they're going to, they might be monkeying with that. So we may have to revisit this at some point.
What it will definitely mean is higher insurance premiums.
Well, sure, because if they tinker with that immunity. But I thought I'd call it to your township. But I can't remember if it's in committee or was it, it's, there's something on appeal. But now that I think about it, I think it's a legislative thing that's pending. And I don't know where I read it. Probably in maybe the PBA journal or something like that. If I find it, I'll let you know, John.
Yeah, thank you. We've had it on there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Next will be authorization of an extension of a storm sewer along Timberlake Drive.
Back in 2017, the township adopted a poll.
Back in 2017, the township adopted a policy under which we help individuals who have stormwater problems that can't be resolved without township participation. And so what the resident gets charged with is actually handling the water on their property. What we end up doing is providing them a place to discharge that water. Right now, the property that you see there is, it's in the lowest part of the plan and the water passes out of that backyard and across that driveway. And it's deteriorated the driveway. So they're prepared to go in and capture that water and bring it to the street. They've got nowhere to take it unless we extend the storm sewer. So Mr. Sumitis is recommending that we undertake this project in-house where we would extend our storm sewer 100 feet and provide them a place to tap in and capture the water.
Is that inlet, is that empty into that lake out front?
Yes.
Is that the only inlet that would empty into that lake?
No, the entire storm sewer system, Timberlake.
So there's no like environmental issue with the fish and all that stuff?
It's fine. No, it was never there prior to that development.
With the lake?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the township engineer and the Public Works Department to extend a public sewer line on Timberlake Drive contingent upon Mr. and Mrs. Voss's commitment to construct the private sewer line.
Second.
We're not going to be responsible for that, Ken.
We'll be responsible only for the public.
It's just like we've done all the rest of it. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0 on that one. Item N. It's like M and N are pretty much related. First is going to be awarded contract for cabin chassis for Public Works Department through Co-Stars.
This is all in the budget, right?
Yes, and it's under, it's under the value that's in the budget.
All right, I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract with Laurel Auto Group, Inc. under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-600 Super Duty four-wheel-drive cabin chassis at a cost of $60,065.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0.
And I'll also make a motion that we enter into a contract with Stevenson Equipment under the Co-Stars Cooperative Purchasing Program for outfitting the 2025 Ford F-600 Super Duty four-wheel-drive cabin chassis at a cost of $80,812.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. I think overall that comes in what, like 30, 35,000 under budget though. Okay, next item we authorize, to authorize the appropriate township official to sign a franchise agreement with Verizon.
So under federal law and regulation, cable television companies operate within municipalities based upon a cable television franchise. Over the years, the discretionary power that has been afforded municipalities has been curtailed. And as a result, these franchise agreements all begin to be standardized and look like each other. And what's contained in this agreement is pretty much an extension of what it is, our relationship is with the cable company now. So we'll receive 5% of the gross revenues from here. The thing that I got to tell you, though, that is concerning is a couple of things. One, more and more people are discontinuing cable service and receiving video services by streaming. We do not get 5% of the revenues as a result of that. The other thing is that Verizon is talking about changing the manner in which they deliver this service. And using a streaming platform similar to what you would see with Hulu or one of those providers. And in which case, they may well be able to elude paying the 5% franchise fee. And this is a, between them and the other cable company, this is a significant source of funding in Peters Township. It's not clear that that's going to happen immediately, but this source of revenue that generates about $500,000 a year could be in jeopardy, so.
Is the reason that you, is the reason that you can't get any revenue from the streaming because it's not authorized for us to do that?
It's not a cable service. The FCC has determined it to be an internet service. And we do not get franchise fees from internet services. In fact, that's the other thing with all the deregulation talk that you have in Washington right now, one of the things that could be deregulated is cable services. And again, what's in jeopardy there is that franchise fee, not only for us, but for all municipalities, so. But it's my recommendation that we adopt resolution 01-07-25, authorize the execution of a franchise agreement with Verizon.
So moved.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. Next item would be change order number four to the contract with Raffle Construction Peterswood Park, deals one and two improvements.
Back on December 9th, council approved change order number three, and that was the change order that removed the work on the infield of field one so that we could in fact then issue a contract to install a synthetic turf on that field. At that time, when it was approved, we had indicated that we would be back to you with a change order that would deal with items that were beyond the scope of the contract. And in your docket is a list of those items. They total $24,231.11. If you look at that in terms of the original contract, forgetting the fact that we had this large deduct on the infield, the total change orders now totals $71,723, which is about 4% of the contract. It's my recommendation that council approve change order for the contract with Raffle Construction in that amount.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. Finally.
Sorry, there's an interrupt there. Is any update on how that construction's going or?
I can, I'll tell you what, I will send you out an update tomorrow. We have a construction meeting tomorrow. I can tell you the field two, they're just waiting for the weather to break. The turf is sitting there to be installed. On field one, they have, the infield had to be lowered and it looks like, from what I can see, that the bulk of that work has been done close. And I don't know whether they have begun trenching or not yet.
Not yet.
Thank you.
Okay, the final item under new business is a resolution designating road names in Peters, or Peters, Rolling Hills Park, rather. All right, well.
I'd like to recognize the contributor of the names that we are pondering, right?
Go ahead.
Ms. Shannifell, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And.
You need to make a motion on that.
Yes, go ahead, Allison.
It's my recommendation that, or I'd like to make a motion that Peters Township Council adopts resolution.
01-08-25.
01-08, designated names, road names for Rolling Hills Park.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. I guess we should say.
What the names are, yeah.
Yeah, there Warrior's Way and Great Lawn Drive.
And of course Warrior's Way will be what is now known as the Loop Road. So the ministry like that.
And we're not going to name that other thing, the other road, yet.
We'll name it when that gets developed and I think.
That's all right, Ken. I just want the people at home to know that.
All right, motion is second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0 there. Mr. Coes, the payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I move they be approved and submitted.
Second.
Okay, motion is second on bills. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 6-0. Is there anything under correspondence that anybody would like to discuss? Mr. Lauer?
Well, the only thing I want to point out is there's a letter in there from Dan Cameo to me regarding Mark Sumitis. And what it says is what we always know from when Mark deals with the public. He does, he represents the township so well and Mr. Cameo took the time to recognize what he had done.
John Mark? We talked about the EQT letters already. Let's move on to reports then. Anybody want to discuss anything there? Miss Alanius?
Paul? At your desk, I put a memo that was drafted by Tracy and Dave concerning the splash pad operations. And it's the first you're going to chance to see it. I just wanted to briefly familiarize you with that because we'll be coming back to you to get some direction. But first of all, one of the things that we've been struggling with is what this is going to be called. And what's in the report is Rolling Hills Aqua Park. The other thing is that the idea is to establish fees to offset the cost of operating it. You know, the one thing that was clear when we did the interactions with the public with regard to the pool and the, previously, is that there's an expectation that we set fees to cover the cost. And we anticipate that to operate this is about $72,000. And we think with the fee set at this rate, we'll be able to achieve that. So a single visit is $2.50. The non-resident would be charged $5. Under the terms of the grant agreement, non-residents cannot be charged more than twice that of what residents are. The thing that we would like to encourage people to do is to buy annual passes. And what our thought is that an annual pass would save for $25. And kind of the thought was that if you had a family of four and you went there three times, the annual pass would be.
Better bar.
Better deal. We encourage people to get the pass. The other thing we'd like to do is to make this cashless instead of taking money at the site and then, and again, encouraging people either to get passes or to pay electronically. One of the things that we're saying is that children under 13 will not be admitted without an adult. And I would assume at that point, everybody would have some type of card or that they could pay with. The advantage of which I think is a couple of things. And the one that has me most concerned is you're going to close this at 7:00 at night with, it could be two younger people there and I don't feel comfortable having them transporting cash to a bank for a night deposit. I don't know that that's necessarily safe. Our intention is to open it Memorial Day through Labor Day. If the weekends are nice after Labor Day, to open it on the weekends. It would be open 11 to 7, Monday through Saturday. And keeping with our policy of not having recreation facilities before noon on Sunday, it would open at noon on Sunday.
That'd be weather permitting, right?
Yes, but you know, the thing is, if it's just a spring, well, you're going to the park to get wet.
Lightning wouldn't be a good thing.
Yes.
Who makes that call? Are we going to have an employee there that's going to be responsible?
We're going to, one of the things we're going to install is lightning detectors so that in fact, we know when lightning's coming. But again, we're giving you this to take a look at and to think about and we're going to be back to you because these fees will all have to be set by ordinance.
Has the board, Parks and Rec Board?
They're getting this at the same time you are.
Perfect.
So I know, Paul, you said that you looked at these prices so we would not lose money and in fact try to make some. But what does this look like compared to other townships and their costs?
You have certain municipalities, this is actually free. And then the non-resident rate is what Bethel Park is charging right now, $5. Yeah, and I think that's what Pine charges as well.
Correct.
Yeah.
Is there a way to get like a card and/or a cardless option? Like maybe something on the phone?
Yes. Want me to come up front?
You bet.
Well, if they buy the pass, then that eliminates that, right?
Like as a pass, like on the phone?
So we're going to use the same system that we use at Direct Center through our community pass. So if you have a membership at Direct Center, you have the opportunity to have the pass on the phone.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So you can go up and you can scan your phone when you come into the rec center. We're going to use the same system at the splash pad.
How do you get that? Sorry. Because I didn't, I didn't know that.
So if you have a membership, if you go on the community pass website and sign in, there's a link in there that'll let you download it on your phone.
Okay.
So yeah, my wife and I just went there to walk the other night and we didn't have our cards. Right. But then if you could ask the people working there, if people present like that, let them know, hey, you can. Yes, yes, we have. And I'll dress up them again, yeah. And they were super nice. It was easy to do, but that would be nice. Yeah, we're seeing a lot more people use their phones with that so they're not trying to pull a card out of a purse or a wallet. Great.
Thank you.
Dave, while you're up there, walking the lake yesterday. Beautiful day. What is our position relative to the skaters and the ice fishermen?
As our park rules state right now, there's no ice skating on the lake. There's nothing in the rules that say you cannot ice fish. So we had an incident.
That old guy.
There was a.
With the canoe last year?
There was a gentleman out there this year, just the other day, when they went out to talk to the kids that were ice skating, playing hockey and had them come off the ice. They brought the gentleman off the ice that was ice fishing, which is not in our parks' rules right now to, that you can't ice fish. So I talked to Chief Glover. We addressed one other incident at night. So they were in the park fishing, ice fishing at night, which you're not allowed to be in the park at night because the parks are closed. So that's being addressed. So that's how they're going to handle it at this point. Really, we can't tell them that they can't ice fish as of now. But it's something I'm going to discuss this month with our Parks and Rec Board. We might come up with a recommendation and how we want to approach that because.
Kannenberg still allow fishing?
Kannenberg allows it and I understand they just had a rescue there. Ice was too thin.
It was eight inches this weekend.
Yeah, so, yeah, it can go from two inches, eight inches pretty quick.
Maybe like just catch an ice fish in there or something. I mean, it seems crazy to do by yourself.
Yeah, I went down today and there were two gentlemen there. They were close to each other, but they were out there ice fishing.
I thought we deferred to the state for those types of regulations. I mean, I can't see us trying to.
Police the fishing.
Right. There's so many different things we can add in our roles every day as things are presented to us.
Yeah.
But so that's something we're going to discuss at the rec and parks board level and bring you all.
I've never ice fished.
As a kid that skated on ponds my whole life, I guess I discourage the fact that there is a risk, but.
Right. Yeah. I think the biggest risk is also to our firing EMS for when they're going out to help somebody and save somebody. It's a little tougher saving somebody on the ice than it is in the water in the summer in a kayak, so that's one of my concerns.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Want to talk about the delinquent garbage bills or?
In your docket, it's a list of the delinquent garbage bills. The face value of what's outstanding that's been leaned is just shy of $143,000. All of those are in various stages of the collection process, so.
And all those people that are paying are incurring the cost of these delinquencies.
That is absolutely correct.
Paul, another comment I have is relative to a section of Route 19 that starts basically in front of Sun Chair Valley. I've talked about it a couple of years that that had needed to be resurfaced.
And we have good news for you.
And we have good news for you.
It's full of pothills right now, so tell me what's going to happen.
It's going to be repaved from the crossroads to the county line.
Yay.
And are they actually going to do it at night this time? Remember, like, 10 years ago when they did it, they decided to pave like at brush hour or 5:00 in the afternoon?
I have no idea when they're going to do it, but we welcome whenever they do it.
Well, that section right now needs some bottle work. It is terrible.
Well, that piece right in front of the Chrysler dealer, too, right when you come down there, that's, that's like, you know, you got to drive defensively, just try to get through.
But thank you for the information. Are we done?
I think so. Anything for the next gentleman?
Well, I have one last thing, and I.
It's not on the list.
Whether council wants to take a position on this. There, I would have liked to brought this to you at the last meeting, but I didn't have this information at the time. There's a zoning appeal in. It is based upon lot coverage. The individual who owns has intended to build a pool, a deck, a poolhouse, an outdoor kitchen, which takes them over the percentage of lot coverage. The hearing actually has already occurred. It was carried over to the, to the next meeting. It was, I guess, the owner is attempting to modify the layout to reduce the amount of coverage, but I don't know on what basis that becomes.
It's a hardship.
A hardship. And so, the question is, since it's been carried over, does council want the township to take an official position in front of the zoning hearing?
Where is that?
My preference would be yes.
How much?
Consistent with the standing that I have on some of their.
I agree with the truth. I agree with Paul, but I'm just curious, how much of an variance are they looking for?
So, the limit is 15%, and I believe what they're showing is 16.7 or 16.4%.
So, cut two inches off of the shed.
I saw some.
Yeah, 16.7.
Sorry, what is that?
16.7.
This is up behind the, the get, the wet go, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Lewis. I think we should be consistent in this. If we're going to oppose one, you know, we shouldn't be picking and choosing which ones we oppose. If we want the board to hold people to the standard for what a variance is supposed